Are there any items the Planning Commissioner would like removed? Any audience?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items one through two, one and two on the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number three.
Thank you. Good morning. Item number three is 14 UR 024, a major amendment to the condition use permit to allow structures in the flood hazard district on approximately 9.46 acres of property known as Legacy Commons at Memorial Park. The applicant has proposed a restroom facility to be located at the west end of the facilities. When Destination Rapid City came to Community Planning and Development Services with this idea, they noted that several of the parents in the short time that the Legacy Commons facilities had been open had requested restroom facilities be provided a little bit closer to the playground. They felt that the existing restrooms within Memorial Park were a little bit too far away for their children to get to, and they didn't want to leave other children unattended while they were taking their kids to the restroom facilities. Zoning of the area, you can see it is Zone Flood Hazard District, General Commercial to the south, Civic Center to the north. An aerial view of the property, I'd like to take a second here to point out the location of any restrooms that do currently exist are located here at the band shell and over here at the tennis courts. And these restrooms would be proposed to be located The layout of the site plan, this is the corner, down here is the corner of Omaha and Mount Rushmore Road. It's about 300 feet northeast of that intersection to where the restrooms are proposed to be located at. Elevations of the proposed restroom, as well as layout of the interior. Sign posted on the property, Memorial Park on Mount Rushmore Road. This is looking east towards Legacy Commons. The area of the proposed restrooms is going to be in this area here. North on Mount Rushmore Road towards the Civic Center and Central. South, looking downtown. Across is Mount Rushmore Road to the existing tennis courts parking lot. We all know there's proposed improvements to that area in the near future. Again, a look into Memorial Park, the location approximately, at the road, the location approximately of the restrooms. Omaha Street looking west, Omaha looking east. And another view onto the site, location of the restrooms. You can see some of the existing playground equipment there on the right-hand screen. A view from where the restrooms are going to be to the neighboring area. When staff was reviewing, as staff took the time to review this, we noted that the need for the restrooms was there. It is quite a distance from any, from the park to any of the neighboring restrooms. And we also noted that the proposed restroom is located outside of the floodway, and all floodplain development requirements will be met, stipulated in the staff report. As such, staff does recommend that the application be, the condition use permit be approved with stipulations outlined in the staff report. There is a representative from Destination Rapid City here, if you have any questions for them, and staff is available for questions at this time.
John Brewer.
Thank you. Good project. Just a question with regard to the security construct on this with regard to, I'm worried about nighttime hours. We've had some security problems in our restrooms, in the park areas at night. Is it open 24 hours a day?
I don't believe so. I'll defer to Alex De Schmidt with the Parks and Recreation to specify when and what times the restroom will be available to the public.
Thanks, John. Great question.
Would you identify yourself, please?
Yes, I can. You bet. Alex De Schmidt, Landscape Design, Rapid City Parks and Recreation. We've worked closely with Destination Rapid City and West Associates to ensure that this bathroom's going to be kind of like Founder's Park, where it's got the magnetic locks, the security system that allows it to be worked on a timer, so that it's not open 24 hours a day, that people just can't come and go as they please, that Parks and Recreation will have the control of that to close it at varying times throughout the season, likely that it's going to be open just for the summer months, but have the capabilities to be winterized as well.
And is, who's in charge of the maintenance on the facility?
Parks and Recreation would be.
Okay. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
I'd also like to note with that, that the staff report does stipulate that prior to issuance of a building permit, Parks and Recreation would sign off on any design, final design or construction plan. So, we can ensure that those safety features are included in the final design.
I move approval.
Second?
Motion's been made by John Brewer and seconded by Tim. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Now we'll go to the regular agenda items.
Item number four is a major amendment to plan development to reduce front yard setbacks for townhomes from 20 feet to eight feet. This item has been continued since the November 20th Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant to meet the notification requirements. The notification requirement has been met at this time. Property's located up on Table Rock Road. Back in September, a final plan development was approved to allow a mix of single-family and townhome lots in this area off of 16. August 18th, the rezoning from General Commercial District to Office Commercial District was approved. The rezoning allows for single-family and townhomes to be constructed. And on August 18th, preliminary subdivision plan was approved to create these townhome and single-family lots. On October 9th, final plan was approved, and throughout this process, the applicant was able to demonstrate that there were buildable envelopes on these properties. Here's an aerial view. The applicant was, as part of the plating, was required to enlarge the cul-de-sac size. However, an exception was granted to allow the existing 84-foot diameter paved surface on the end of the cul-de-sac, whereas typically the standards are that a 96-foot diameter cul-de-sac be constructed. The exception was granted because the applicant was able to demonstrate that there were sufficient building envelopes. There are no plans at this time to enlarge the cul-de-sac, however. We'll move on to this site plan that the applicant submitted, where he's demonstrating that with his eight-foot front yard setback, there will be 20 feet from the front of the garage to the sidewalk. However, if the cul-de-sac were to be enlarged in the future, the distance between the front of the structure and the sidewalk would become eight feet, leaving no area for vehicles to park in front of the house. As it is, with the applicant's proposed setback, vehicles would be parked hanging out into the public right-of-way. Here's taking a look at the property, sign posted on the property, looking to the south and west, adjacent to the east, or north, sorry, looking to the west towards 16, and another one out to the east. Staff's recommendation is that the major amendment to the plan development be denied for the front yard setback reduction. The applicant is here to answer any questions, and staff is available for any questions.
John Brewer.
Have some questions. Tony, probably.
Good morning, Commission. Staff?
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
How fast is that, the back of that lots, is it 7A and 7B?
Correct.
Those two lots that are involved? And how close is the cliff in the back? What is, tell me about the building envelope.
I guess it's a tough thing to describe, as opposed to showing you the contours, which maybe we can pull that back up?
While you're bringing that up, Vicki, I have a question. When was the last time the city enlarged a cul-de-sac?
Thank you.
Ted, maybe you can help out here, too. We do street projects yearly, and as we see substandard development come in, and if we have concerns and complaints from neighborhoods about lack of parking, and remember, this went from a commercial use, where you would have to provide off-street parking, to a residential use, where it is assumed that you're going to need to have that additional visitor parking in the street. I don't know the last time that we've improved a cul-de-sac.
And the city did issue an exception to 84 feet?
We did. When the plat came forward, that was one of our concerns, knowing that the rezone, along with the change in use, would trigger some street parking. We wanted to make sure that, to come on board with this. And remember, this is an area that was platted years ago, and it sat vacant. We were excited to work with Tony, so that we could get some development along Table Rock. It is going to be a mix of residential and commercial. And we thought this was a nice compromise, bringing forward the townhomes and the single-family. So, as a part of the plat and the original final plan development for the townhomes, we looked closely to make sure that there were building envelopes to secure those parking aprons in front of the structure, long-term, even if the cul-de-sac would need to be built out to provide additional street parking. And Tony did show that originally, and we did have topographic information at that time. And granted, it will, it will be a unique design, but we have those in our community in other areas where there are hills.
Okay. So, I guess I'm trying to figure out the eight-foot at this time.
If I may, John, as Vicki stated, this was designed and constructed as a commercial street. I believe that results in 24-foot wide pavement. In order for it to be a residential street, I believe that would have to increase to another two feet to provide adequate parking for the neighborhood. One thing that's unique to this, so I was very pleased that the city granted that exception, and didn't make me widen that street. So, I'm thankful for that. One thing that's unique to, as far as the parking situation, is that, if any of you are familiar with this, these lots are very, very deep, okay? There's no depth problem, and it goes deep for a long ways, and it's flat on most every other lot. For example, the lot just to the, where it says water main easement to the right of that, you know, that's a flag lot that goes down. They'll have plenty of parking down there. The adjoining two lots, which you see as 5A, all those homes are going to be built back with long driveways, parking areas. The lots to the left, or south, if you will, as you see, 8B, 8C, those are very deep, and I'm encouraging those builders and the buyers that I'm working for, as far as preschools on there, we're going to make those aprons, those driveways, very deep, so nobody's parking on the street. And I think, John, you hit the nail on the head, as far as, we'll go back to 7A and 7B, as far as why we need this. Yes, it does slope off. It's going to be a large footprint on that lot. The townhomes probably going to be up to 2,000 square feet, is what we're looking at right now. And also, the sewer depth is, on that particular lot, is very shallow. So, in order for us to achieve grade for the sewer, at least on the main level, we'd like to be closer. So, keep in mind, what I'm asking for is ultimately, if it was constructed, you allow this, and it was constructed, it's going to look the same as any other setback on any other residential street in Rapid City, okay? So, the threat for you, and really for me down the road, is what's the likelihood of that cul-de-sac being enlarged? What would the reason be? What would the catalyst be? Where would the money come from? I just see it as extremely unlikely that that cul-de-sac would ever need to be enlarged, let alone would be enlarged. So, given that, I think that's a very low risk that that's going to happen. So, if you agree with that, I'd ask you to accept what I'm asking. If you think that ultimately that bulb would need to be enlarged, the money would be there for it to be enlarged, then this isn't a good idea. But this is the only lot that it affects.
May I ask follow-up question?
Yes, please, John.
So, the eight-foot setback would be in the event that the cul-de-sac had to be enlarged? It would be a 20-foot setback with the, if it was, if the cul-de-sac is unchanged? Is that correct?
No, it's an eight-foot setback right now, and the difference being, your right-of-way line is your front property line. That's not changing. We've got the right-of-way. It's required to have a 96-foot diameter for the bulb, and as a part of the plat, he did dedicate the additional right-of-way. The physical improvement was not required to be improved upon, and Tony did give you the stats for a commercial street versus a local street, and that would be for the straight section of the cul-de-sac. The bulb itself requires that it be an 84-foot diameter bulb in the future, if it's determined by some, in the future, those that live out there, if there's concerns with lack of parking. And we do get a lot of conversation as a neighborhood matures, and, and different property owners come in, and they don't understand why it came to where it is today. And Public Works gets those phone calls about those types of things, that lack of parking. So, if approved today, you will be approving an eight-foot setback to the front lot line. That part won't change. If we did make expansions within the cul-de-sac bulb, we have the right-of-way. It's just a physical improvement. So, in other words, if we made the improvements, the physical improvements, and I would assume, Tony, that you had to sign a waiver of right to protest, so that if there was ever a need in the future, the property owners in that area could be assessed to pay for that improvement. So, then the sidewalk would be bumped further south in this case, in lieu of where it currently is located within the right-of-way, it would be pushed back further south.
That was my next question. That is the sidewalk that shows adjacent to the curb of the existing cul-de-sac?
Right.
So, if it had to be improved, likely, that would all move back. And the building envelope on 7A and 7B would still have that 20-foot parking lot, or parking driveway?
No, then it would have an eight-foot parking apron outside of the sidewalk area. So, it would overhang over the sidewalk, if that physical improvement was brought forward in the future. What Tony's trying to show you by that graphic, and this is your graphic that you drew up showing the setbacks, is that from the edge of the sidewalk to the front of the garage, that there's 20 feet right now. But 12 of that 20 feet will be out in the right-of-way. Eight foot of the parking apron would be on the property.
And it's only on those two lots, 7A and 7B?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have, have some issues with this, and I appreciate Tony trying to bring forward some properties that are going to be nice out there, and they'll have nice views, and, and I think it's glad, I'm glad that they're, they're building. But to, to change our, our thinking on this and say, it's okay to have an eight-foot setback, it just doesn't seem right to me. I look at the sidewalk, and if, if there is a sidewalk that goes through there in that cul-de-sac, that means that today, a car would be extending over the top of that sidewalk. And I live in a cul-de-sac that's very similar to this. And I can tell you that as, as people change, and people come in and buy homes, the demographics, as you mentioned, Vicki, change a lot. My neighbor, who I love dearly, has two sons who are driving. They have five vehicles, two in the garage, two in their driveway, and always, there's somebody out on the cul-de-sac, parked somewhere on the cul-de-sac. And even in front of my house, you can get maybe one car parallel park. And if you have any neighbors at all, and anybody that comes to your house, it is difficult to park in a cul-de-sac as it is. It's very narrow. And the idea of having someone be able to have a vehicle that parks across the sidewalk, or in area where there is this ability to walk, just it, it's too tight for me. I just don't see that that's feasible. The other issue is that I think there are ways to mitigate this and, and still build out there without making this correction for, for Tony. When he, they originally came in and, and looked at this lots, in order to build it and plaid it out this way, they were supposed to be buildable lots, and, and I, I think there still is buildable lots. It's going to be difficult, but I think there still is a way to do that. So, I don't, I don't think, see a reason why we need to make this, this change in this, in this, reducing the setback. So, I'm going to be voting no, or voting yes for the, the staff report as it stands, unless there's a different kind of motion. But I agree with staff. I think this is not the right thing to do for this property. Thanks.
I don't see any other requests?
If I may respond to that, it's been mentioned a couple times that I approve this with the understanding that I felt that there was adequate building envelopes in all these lots. No, I did ask at least the engineer, I don't know if I discussed it with the staff, but that that bulb, recognizing that that was going to be an issue on 7A, 7B, asked that that bulb be transferred to the north, okay? Because 5A, as you see at lot 5A, could accommodate, could have accommodated that. Somehow, that didn't get agreed to, or maybe engineer didn't discuss it with staff, but that was my initial wish, was that the bulb be transferred to the north. I'm not sure why that didn't end up taking place. But again, it boils down to, because if it's, if it, we leave it the way it is, I'm going to end up with about a 37-foot driveway on that townhome as it is. And I guess this process is a little difficult in that the eight feet is certainly ideal, probably allows me to gravity flow from the main floor, but would you be willing to consider something less than the 20 feet, okay? You think less than the 20 feet is going to benefit me. So, is there a, can I get, maybe not eight feet, but can I get a little bit more than, less than 20, is what I'm asking? Because every little bit helps. Or do I have, do I reapply for, you know, a 14-foot, and have that accepted or denied, then I come back for a 16-foot?
I'm headed.
And again, it boils down to, I just can't see why that bulb would ever increase.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Vicki. Just to clarify, so, when they came in with the plat, and we looked at the reclassification of the street, because it went from commercial to residential, it triggered that additional right-of-way be dedicated. When, when Tony's referencing the engineer, he's talking about his engineer. We were perplexed by that, too. They could have brought that configuration in for that expansion to the bulb in various ways, and for whatever reason, he just dropped it all to the south, instead of more or less splitting the difference. And an option would be to go back and replat the right-of-way, that would in fact give us that additional room in the future, in case we needed that expansion, and would reduce his request to you today. The other part of what Tony's requested is, the application came in to reduce the front yard setback from 20 feet to eight feet. Do you have the authority to do something different? And the answer is, yes, you do. If you wanted to reduce it to 14 feet today, or, or some other number, you could without him having to reapply.
Amanda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Vicki, since you brought up that, that topic, because I was going to try to address that as well for the applicant. At this time, the Planning Commission, because I'm not a voting member, but the Planning Commission also has the ability today to continue this for two weeks or another four weeks, and allow this same application to be considered by staff, so that what Tony's proposing today, or trying to negotiate out, can go back, so that a better answer can be brought, or a better question can be brought back to the Planning Commission?
Yes, we can continue this out. Bear with us that we do have a timeframe, that we have to take final action on an item. We would need to check that and get Tony's concurrence, that he would sign a waiver if need be, so that, we're good to go? Fletcher? Okay. Fletcher's indicated that it's been signed, so yes, you could continue this out to let Tony bring back in a proposal, showing how that house would sit in relationship to the contours, how that sewer would then work. We did have a little discussion today about the gravity sewer design, and see if that's something that met with staff's review and approval. Certainly, it goes back to the original argument, though, that 2,000-square-foot home may be overbuilding the site, knowing that there, there is severe topographic constraints. And I don't know if any of you have been out there to this area, but I encourage you to go if you haven't. And again, these, this is an area where the street's been in place for many years, and walking down into this lot, it's difficult to walk back out.
Thank you. And then I did have a couple follow-up questions?
Yes, please.
Thank you. And on, Tony, on this one, I guess my question is, is, and you kind of addressed it a little bit, is when you first brought this through all of the meetings that we've had up until this point, and the indication or the sign-off was that these were buildable lots as platted, and now to come back and ask for the exception, what exactly changed that makes these non-buildable? Is it the design of the house, as Vicki just indicated, that it's the design of the house and the garage? I mean, could, could a different structure be put on this lot and still make it a buildable lot without asking for the setback?
That's a good question, yeah. I would say it's not non-buildable, but based on what is being built in that neck of the woods, they're larger, higher-end homes, wanting to keep with that same theme. But we can stick something else on there. It's just going to be a pretty awkward design, much smaller than what else is being built around there. And again, it's going to have a 30, 37-foot driveway. By the way, those pictures don't do the area, area justice. Were you the photographer? Who's the photographer? Could have done a whole lot better. Looks a lot sexier than that. Drive out there and take a look. But as far as going back to why this was accepted, again, I talked with my engineer. I don't believe I talked with staff as far as changing that bulb. There was other pressures as far as getting this thing done, and the timeframe that it did. Staff did a wonderful job in meeting my timeline. I had to get it done based on certain things. So, it was kind of just pushed forward. I didn't think I had the time to necessarily fight that.
So, then the other follow-up question I have concerns the bulb of the cul-de-sac itself. And some discussion this morning also centered around possibly moving that, even if it's just the, the right-of-way or the configuration. Is there, and like I said, whether you continue this, or you ask the Planning Commission to make a decision today, is that an open option at this time, to reconsider the bulb at this time?
I've already sold two of those lots, so that would make it a bit more difficult. And as far as taking this back to staff, I don't know if the staff would ever consider anything less than 20 feet, if the belief is still out there, that this cul-de-sac would need to be enlarged at some latter date, right?
Anything's open, so that, I mean, that's, that's why I just brought that up.
Appreciate that, throwing that out there. You bet.
So, just in conclusion then, because I'm not a voting member of the Planning Commission, but I just wanted to point out, I've had the same experience as Karen has, as far as cul-de-sacs. I haven't lived on a cul-de-sac, but I've had two family members that live on a cul-de-sac. And what you see today and what you envision never turns out to be what actually goes into play. And so, when you talk about parking and stuff, I have to agree. You end up with, for whatever reason, multiple people that end up all of a sudden parking in that cul-de-sac willy-nilly. And I don't care how much parking driveway a person has on their lot, you always exceed it. I don't know about anybody else, but even in my house, I have over exceeded my house. And the answer is, is buy a bigger house. I would just fill it to the capacity of a bigger house. So, that's not necessarily the answer. So, just wanted to point out, in cul-de-sacs, they are very difficult to, if you don't allow as much parking as possible, because no matter how much parking you give, it will be exceeded. So, personally, I believe in the city's requirements, especially not allowing the setbacks, but I'm just representing the council, city council at this point. But I appreciate you building out there. I, I understand your challenges, and it is a beautiful area. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Amanda?
Tim Rose.
Would 14, you're talking about 14 feet, would that be reasonable? I'm just kind of.
As I said, yeah. Thank you for that, Tim. Yeah, as, as, as much as I can, absolutely. I mean, the farther the setback is, the higher the house has to come out of the ground. You know, the steeper that driveway's going to have to be in order You know, the steeper that driveway is going to have to be in order for us to maintain that gravity sewer or gravity flow on the main level.
So there's no way to reverse the, the cul-de-sac to the other direction or you already got five A already sold or?
Oh, moving the bulb?
Just kind of invert it to the others, to the north instead of this?
Yeah.
How do you have it now?
I have the three adjoint, those three adjoining lots that would be affected by that are already sold. But yeah, fourteen, I mean, fourteen feet would be, would, eight, eight foot is certainly ideal, but yeah, fourteen feet would be better than what it is today.
I'd take, make a motion to.
We still have more people to, with questions.
Okay.
John Berwer?
Thank you. I only have one question and I'm prepared to help you out this morning. How long is a super cab pickup from the garage door to the sidewalk? That's the sidewalk discussion and the exceptions we've granted in the past. So what is that, twenty-two feet? Twenty feet?
It's about twenty-four feet, yeah.
So take twenty-four feet from the garage door, what's the number? Is it fourteen as Tim suggested or is it another number? And I can't do the math on this, but.
To the sidewalk, John?
Pardon me?
To the sidewalk, to the edge of the sidewalk? Was that your question? From the garage door to the edge of the sidewalk?
Under what you asked today, the proposal that staff has suggested we deny, from the garage door to the sidewalk is what distance today?
Twenty feet.
Pardon me?
Twenty feet. But remember, eight foot of it, of the driveway would be on private property and twelve foot would be in right-of-way.
So if you take it to fourteen, you can't put a pickup in the driveway?
It'd be.
No, you're still going to be over, if you grant any part of this variance, you're other than maybe going down to eighteen feet. And then assuming that you're not going to have an extended cab pickup in the part, in the driveway.
My, well, I live on actually a cul-de-sac and an adjacent cul-de-sac. And unlike the two commenters early, in the last eleven years, I only have one neighbor that parks one car sometimes. So I suspect if Tony is going to put in high-end stuff, and not that we're high-end, but it's just the nature of our neighborhood, I guess, there aren't any cars in the cul-de-sacs. They seem to stay in the garage. So.
Eight, ten-foot setback would answer your question. It'd be, require a necessity, necessitate a ten-foot setback.
So that's eighteen instead of twenty, the request today.
Excuse me, a twelve foot would accommodate a twenty-four foot vehicle and not be in on the sidewalk. So that would be a twelve-foot setback. And provide for twenty-four feet from the garage to the sidewalk.
I can give you fourteen today. So if that motion comes forward, then I can do that. Otherwise, you got to kick it back to the people and have them spend some more time with you on the correction. So I'll wait for the motion.
Steve?
I, I live right across from a cul-de-sac and I, with John, I don't, we don't ever have any issues out there. I mean, I look, ours is pretty good, but we've got, they've got the exact, I'm assuming the, the regulation size cul-de-sac. This one's a little smaller from my understanding, correct? Now, somebody asked a question a little earlier and I guess I would still like a follow-up question and answer that, because I don't recall if we've ever widened a cul-de-sac that I can recall that's come before us and unless they do without coming before us. I mean, how often, is, is that something that we ever do or can anybody answer that question?
Ted, do you, do you know of any data? Just note that we have city projects yearly and we are out there rebuilding streets every year and I would assume some of them are cul-de-sacs.
I guess I can't specifically answer if we've enlarged cul-de-sacs. I don't, you know, no, I don't keep track of them. We do rebuild them all the time.
Would that be something that would have to come back to the council? Because we're, we're talking about taking the right-of-way from, or you know, moving the sidewalk back and taking some of their property. I'd assume that would be a big deal.
We wouldn't be taking any right-of-way from property. The right-of-way is there. We would just be making improvements in pub, in land we already own.
I understand that Vicki, but when you go to somebody's property, say, I'm taking eight feet, to them, you're taking their property. I understand we own the right-of-way, but when you enlarge that, you have to notify them, we're moving the property back eight feet. It is a big deal. And that's why I'm asking, we should know if that's happened before.
Oh, I'm sure it has. And, and certainly if you would like that answer, we could continue this, get with the public work staff that work on city projects and have those numbers for you. Depending upon how they're funded, if it comes out of the CIP, that all goes to council and council's got to approve those projects. So our street improvements, they, they do disrupt neighborhoods. We do go work with the neighbors to let them know what's happening as we're going through the prod, the properties. And that's a part of why public work staff noted the concern here is who wants to knock on the door of that property owner in the future saying, hey, you've only owned eight foot of this yard that you've been taking care of, the rest of it's public right-of-way?
No, I understand that Vicki, it's a huge issue when you got to go back and, that's why I'm asking the question, because if it's something that doesn't occur very often and then, and we're talking about two lots here, then it'd be something I'd think about. If it's something that has happened quite a bit, because you're right, if I go back to somebody and say, hey, I bought this house, you know, and I didn't realize I had this twelve feet here that belonged to the city and suddenly you're going to put a sidewalk eight feet from my house, I'd be a little upset about that. So that's why I'm asking the question. Thank you.
Karen?
Thank you. I couldn't support a fourteen-foot setback. I know in the past we have made an exception and made eighteen-foot setbacks and we didn't like that, but we have done that in the past. I could, I could agree to do that because we've set that precedent and I, I would follow along with that. But fourteen feet still to me is, is, we're giving this property owner public right-of-way basically by, by doing this. We're saying it's okay to use public right-of-way to make your, your driveway to park your car on. And the rest of the public doesn't have that same privilege. But we're doing this because we think this is an exception for, for the, the area. And I, I agree, the, the area is gorgeous. It's very similar to where I live and there'll be great views down through there with the property the way it is. But I think there's a way to, to still use that property. I think the, the owner of the property can maybe move the garages back, do something, make the houses smaller. There's a way to still be able to build on this lot. I don't think we're depriving the, the public or the owner of this property from building on that lot. So my recommendation is if we're going to, to make a change that we, we allow the eighteen foot instead of the eight as he's requesting and change that, that setback from twenty to eighteen. And that's my, I'll make that motion.
Karen made the motion to change the setback to eighteen and John seconded it to change the setback to eighteen feet. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, Commission.
I think I'm good.
Good morning, Brett. It'll be great to hear.
Good morning. How are you? All right. We're going to talk a little bit about board structure this morning. Mayor had written an email and sent it out to each, each of you and I know you have that and you have it in your packet. For those who, who don't have it in front of them or for those who may be watching, what we try to do is just kind of paraphr- paraphrase what his concerns are. And then we can have somewhat of an open discussion on what your thoughts are. In, in his memorandum to you, he, he talks about wanting to give the planning commission the authority to look at appointing or recommending appointments to three boards that are currently under the community development department. Those would be the air quality board, the zoning board of adjustment and historic preservation commission. He mentions in the opening paragraph that starting in about 2011, the city made a, an effort to consolidate the boards and committees. Essentially, we had eighty-six standing board, standing boards or ad hoc committees in the city and we have since then reduced that number down to forty-two. Almost all of those are, members are appointed by the mayor. And you can imagine that for the mayor's office, that's quite a feat to have to administer that every year, figure out who in stagger terms is coming off, who's going on, getting the applications sent in, vetting those applications and then making those appointments. So one of the main reasons we did the initial consolidation was to at least reduce in half that process. So that's essentially what he's covering in the first paragraph of his memorandum. He also cites a similar process that he had, has put together in the parks and recreation department. Essentially, there were four boards there. There's the parks and rec advisory board, there's the beautification committee, urban forestry and wildlife boards. Four separate boards that were making decisions somewhat independently of each other. What he had determined that it was probably best to have the parks and recreation advisory board provide oversight for the other three. So beautification, urban forestry and wildlife are now appointed by the beautification, or by the parks and recreation board. It seems to be working quite well. And what that board does right now is they recommends, recommends the appointments to the city council and the city council does the confirmation. He describes this as being somewhat more of a hub and spoke system than kind of the flat hierarchy that's currently existing. And I guess I can't argue with him about that. I, I think there is some merit for this commission to look at a similar model. And so when you ask, why are we doing this now? Well, there, there are a number of things that we're working on right now, so I think the time is right to take a look at this process. For example, several weeks back, we, we came to you with a, a report from Jim Lee regarding the historic preservation commission. And within his recommendations, he had talked about the planning commission making appointments to the historic preservation board. And I know you had a discussion and some of you were not necessarily in agreement with that process. Nevertheless, we are in the midst of bringing to you a draft ordinance for the HPC fairly soon. And so we would like to have that discussion one more time with you, get your opinion on that before we complete the final draft. So that's one reason we're bringing this forward to you today. Second reason is on our board of adjustment, we currently have five members, but we don't have any alternates. So what Carla is doing right now is drafting an ordinance for our board of adjustment that would include two additional alternates so that we don't have problems meeting quorum. Lastly, the air quality board, and this is a, a board that's kind of a city and county combination. There are seven members on this board, one of which is appointed by the Pennington County Commissioners, the others are appointed by the city. Right now, the mayor appoints those individuals and they have particular expertise in their fields. If we're to have you as planning commissioners do the vetting of those applicants, we would only do the six that are appointed by the city. The Pennington County would continue to appoint their, their member. I, I think when we did our comprehensive plan back in April and we brought it to the commissioners and you were all heavily involved in the creation of the comprehensive plan, you can look at it and there are a number of things related to each of these boards. For example, air quality is mentioned several times in the comprehensive plan. Board of adjustment essentially implements the plan through zoning variances and reviews of those applications. And then also the historic preservation board is prominently listed throughout the comprehensive plan, their mission, their duty and so forth. So as planning commissioners, if you decide to go with this model that's being proposed by the mayor, I think it gives you a little bit more control on the implementation of the comprehensive plan. It gives you a say in who's on those boards. What I would recommend to the mayor and also throughout this ordinance is that a committee of staff, planning commissioners would convene and do the interviews. So essentially, if we were going to be appointing board of adjustment members or HPC members, the applications would come into staff. You as the planning commission could decide at what time, who you want to be on the interview committee. We could thoroughly vet the applicants and then we could bring those recommendations back to you as a planning commission. You would make a formal recommendation to the city council for appointment of those members. And I think that gives you a little bit more say in, in, you know, who is on these boards. Also somewhat takes the mayor out of a hot seat here. I mean, it's not just an administrative issue for him, having to appoint members to forty-two boards, but certainly he gets pressured to put certain people on boards. There are also in our history, probably some strong mayors who wanted to populate the boards with people that were of like mind. So I think that takes some of the politics out of this, gives that, that power to our planning commission. I think the, the model has a great chance to succeed. So with that, I will open it up to discussion and anything that is said here today, certainly I'll take it back to Mayor Quaker. Again, he apologizes for not being here this morning. He is out of town, working on some items with the legislature, so.
John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Morning, Brett.
Morning.
Couple of questions. Karen and I were talking before the meeting convened this morning. As much as we should, we don't know a thing about air quality, so we'll be very curious about what role we might play there. The existing members on these three proposed boards, in past discussions with the mayor and specifically for the zoning board of adjustments, he thought actually the planning commission would act as the zoning board of adjustment. That our, if we were to bring that under our sphere, then we would convene the first meeting at seven presumably as the zoning board of adjustment take care of any business that we had, adjourn and then reconvene as the planning commission. At least that was how I understood that to work. Does that mean that the planning commission members would then become the zoning board of adjustment members or are the existing members, would they be part of that first meeting?
Yeah, the board of adjustment, actually, you could do that a number of different ways. You could have five members that are independent of the planning commission where there is no crossover. You could actually have a subset of planning commission or the entire planning commission serve both as the planning commission and the board of adjustment. So you're right, you could convene as the planning commission and then take care of that business and then reconvene as the board of adjustment. Or you could do something somewhat in the middle. So if you wanted representation on the board of adjustment, you could say that as part of the ordinance rewrite, we want one or two members of the, of the planning commission to serve on the board of adjustment. So there's various levels that you could take that to. And I'm not sure what your comfort level is. When I talk to the mayor and we go back and forth on this quite often, I think he would prefer to have one board serving as planning commission and, and the board of adjustment. I'm somewhat more in the middle. And so I would, I would say if you wanted to appoint planning commissioners to the board of adjustment, that's probably okay. The two independent boards, I think their missions are a little different. So there is some.
Well, having been in this discussion also with the mayor for, I would guess over a year as he started this journey, I've, I've come to believe that if we do consolidate, that I'd like to see all of that on the planning commission so that we'll meet the goals that need, it constructs some independence. And hopefully some planning commission members will have that expertise and experience that they could contribute, contribute meaningfully to the work of that committee. I have another question about, you mentioned several times about the administration piece of it. We'd have to go find people, recruit them. So there's some administrative vetting that needs to be done before staff does a background check, so to speak, or checks to see. I'm kind of interested in one, having served as chair of this organization on occasion and several others up here have as well. As you know, we're. on occasion, and several others up here have as well. Um, as you know, we're paid, uh, the grand total of zero, uh, and we do spend extra time when we're in the leadership on this. Uh, how that would work, um, it, 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 that could be a problem in my mind, uh, about providing administrative time or resources to get that done. Uh, and it would mean additional, um, considerable, uh, additional responsibility to people that accept leadership in the organization. I also see, you mentioned that, uh, we've played a great role on the comprehensive plan. Personally, uh, I attended as many, if not all, of the meetings that the city had on that. Um, and I think that the work that's done at the Planning Commission and ultimately goes to the council, uh, we're responsible. We only do that about every twenty years. Uh, and if all we're gonna do is make exceptions to setbacks, uh, and not live within the promises, uh, to ourselves of the comprehensive plan, that I, I certainly see the zoning Board of Adjustment piece being in there. Like I said, another thing about air quality. So, I have one last comment, and then I'll get off the mic, and that's historic preservation. I honestly don't know what the best model for this is. Uh, between, uh, preservation of, um, the history, um, and the administration of, um, federal law and regulation with regard to historic preservation, I know there are people that are deeply committed to this, and, uh, and I think for all, for a lot of the right reasons, that's important in Rapid City as it is anyplace else in the, in the world. Uh, on the other hand, um, sometimes zealots, uh, overlook practical matters, and, um, uh, and that's been problematic for property owners within the, uh, business, or the, the districts. Um, that makes this organization quasi-judicial under the zoning Board of Adjustment.
Right.
Which currently, the Planning Commission does not have that under state statute. Uh, I guess you could add it under municipal code. And under the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, should that be added to our venue, it seems to me we would be accepting, uh, some federal, uh, direction on matters that we might adjudicate. So, uh, I guess probably with all that yabber going on, uh, those are some questions that I would have. Uh, I think the mayor is right about one thing. Uh, eighty-six committees is too many, and maybe forty-two, uh, but, uh, as I last recall, the mayor and council get paid to do, and staff get paid to do this vetting work. Uh, that part, I'm just really uncomfortable out soliciting. I just hope that these areas of, uh, uh, oversight and, and, uh, work by the community have good people on them, and have expertise, that have a real desire to make sure we get it right for Rapid City. Those are my comments, and I'll shut up.
Karen?
Thank you. I have a few comments also. Um, when you mentioned that, uh, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, they have an oversight for the other committees, I'm not sure what you mean by oversight.
Yeah, essentially, when I say oversight, I mean oversight over the appointment of the individuals to the other boards. And so, um, you know, and I wish Alex had not left, 'cause he could probably do a better job of explaining how that is running right now. Um, but certainly, I think that they probably are a little bit more active in what the other boards are doing. To what extent, I can't tell you. That'd be a better question for Parks and Rec to, to handle.
Okay. Well, I know that, that they have some funding, I mean, and they use that funding, and I, I can see if, if, uh, Park and, Parks and Rec want to have some oversight to see what each committee is doing and kind of keep track of them.
Right.
And in this case, I don't know what we'd do with air quality. I mean, that, I don't see any oversight other than appointing somebody. Um, the Historic Preservation Commission, they do have some ties, I suppose, to us, but it's very little, other than we'd appoint them. Um, they get their funding from the state through the federal government for anything they do. Uh, they can go to the city council if, if, uh, a, a member who feels they've been wronged can go and appeal to the city council, but it never comes really through us. We don't have any, any impact on them at all. The zoning Board of Adjustment, today, the, the one we did with the setbacks, that's similar to what we do, um, at the zoning Board of Adjustment. And, so I can see some ties there, and, and, but for any oversight that we'd have other than appointing those, unless we did, like, uh, John had mentioned, where the whole Planning Commission becomes the zoning Board of Adjustment at a certain period of time, or however you want to work that. That I can see that has some, some merit as far as, maybe not oversight, but as far as understanding what's, what's happening. And it depends on, if, if we're the ones that are going to be appointing them, then we really wouldn't be the ones that would be on the zoning Board of Adjustment. I can't see us appointing ourselves. I mean, that just doesn't...
Do that suggest...
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. We could. Um, but, so, so there's some questions as far as, as how that would, that would work. Um, I think the, the zoning board, you mentioned there's only five people and no alternates, but I think that's not correct unless they've made a change yesterday, and I, I wasn't at the meeting yesterday, but I'm, I'm an alternate, so there's five, and then two alternates currently. Is that correct, Carla?
That's correct.
Yes, that's correct. We just, we need to update the ordinance to discuss the alternates. So, that is the change that is being proposed. Um, one of the changes that's being proposed.
Okay, thanks. Um, anyway, those are, are my comments. I, I don't know that I'd want to be the one that says, "You can't be on this board and you can," but I think the really harder problem will be finding people. I think, I think the mayor and his staff and, and any staff members try to find good people to work on any of the boards, even, even Planning Commission. Sometimes it's difficult to find good people to, to do that. And so, I think that's the difficulty. If, if we're the ones that are going to go out and try to recruit people, that, there's more of us to do that, but I think we could still do that for the mayor without being the ones that actually do it. So, there's good and bad on both sides. I, I can see the benefit on, on some of the things and, and, uh, but I do have some questions about a couple of the items there, so, that's it. Thanks.
Jan?
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions that I think should be considered by the mayor before, uh, going forward with this. The purpose of this commission is primarily to, to provide a public hearing on the items on the agenda, and supposedly, anyone in the public concerned about them can see what we do and everything we considered before a decision was made without any outside information being supplied that wasn't available to the public. If the mayor, um, and I have found that elected officials don't understand, um, very well the difference between our standard for conflict of interest and their standard for conflict of interest, where they are, uh, tasked with listening to their constituents and investigating what's going on, we're tasked with avoiding that. Um, if the mayor is receiving pressure on political appointments, I'm not sure that switching that to the Planning Commission is such a good idea, but even so, if we consider people, whether we accept or reject them, and I'm assuming this would be, uh, in camera because we wouldn't be discussing personnel matters publicly.
Right.
That means, and those members go to these boards, and presumably, at least some of them would be involved with the air quality or the historic preservation, then every time a recommendation comes from those boards or from one of those individuals, the whole Planning Commission has a conflict of interest and has to abstain on the, on the item. Uh, i- if that can be figured out so that it's not a, a, a problem, I, I don't have any problem with it either. But I do think the conflict of interest problem is sincere. If we're appointing the members whose recommendations we will be considering, and we've discussed whether we wanted them to be that or not, and turned some of them down and accepted some others, I think we're, we've been involved in whatever item was brought before us, either by them or by their commissions or board. And that's it.
Steve?
Well, right now, I serve on the variance board, and we have had subs ever since I've been there. And I serve on this committee, and I serve on both of these at the request of the mayor. And I, I guess, to me, it seems more that this is appropriate, that the mayor and the council be making these decisions, because I just serve on the board that they've asked me to serve on. But when it comes to looking at them, having served on both the variance board and this, this committee, they, they are similar. I, I can tell you that right away, that we see some of the same instances. So, I, to me, it makes sense that maybe we'd have this committee take care of the variance items, and then take a break and come back, and then do, and do the Planning Commission, because they, they are very, very similar. As far as air quality, yeah, I, I know nothing about the air quality. And when it comes to historic preservation, as, as John called them zealots, people that fervently believe in what they believe, I don't always agree with them, but I like having them there, because I think it gives us that medium that we can work towards. It keeps us honest, and it keeps our, our downtown looking historic. And again, I think that's a very, probably a very important group to have, and I'm not sure that we really fall in that, in that, in, in that line. It's outside of what we do here quite a bit, I think. But having said that, again, I, I do agree that the two, the variance board and, and the, uh, planning commission go together, but again, I think this really is a decision for, for Amanda and her group and the mayor, because I, I serve at, at the discretion of both the, the ma- uh, council and of the mayor. Thank you.
Amanda?
Thank you. Just to, um, answer or clarify what Steve was just bringing up, um, this is being brought forth by the mayor, because it's the mayor's office that appoints them. If, what Mr. Limbaugh indicated to you, if the Planning Commission were to take over the appointment, they would still be confirmed by the city council. So, the city council is in it no matter what. So, this is strictly the mayor trying to reorganize stuff and getting your input as far as, um, basically, your level of, of risk and acceptability of, of wanting to work with some other, other committees. And I appreciate the input, because I will tell you, um, this has been brought up to the city council, you know, for the mayor to, to propose this and try to get some feedback and stuff. And I'll tell you, the mayor's done an excellent job in appointing you as planning commissioners, because the ideas and the thoughts and the questions that you've raised today hadn't even crossed my mind. So, you've given me a lot to think about, and I can see a lot of the, the, the concerns that you have. They make total sense. So, I appreciate the discussion today. Thank you, Brett.
Good.
John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Brett, I presume that you have some plan for, after discussion, to come back around, and you mentioned earlier that Carla was trying to write some ordinances and whatever. Um, and I, I would encourage, uh, the chair to maybe straw pull the group that's here today. Um, I think I heard zoning Board of Adjustment sounds like something that, if we got nothing else done but that, uh, that's not a baby step, that's a good step. Uh, and I heard air quality and historic preservation require some thoughts, because like Amanda, uh, I heard some things that I hadn't thought of. And so, um, and I'd like to, uh, see more of that. Uh, what do you propose, or what, uh, how does this come back so that you can take meaningful action?
Well, um, there are two ordinances that are gonna be coming to you in pretty short order, and I think we're scheduled for the nineteenth of February, if I'm right, Carla. And that would be for the Board of Adjustment, reorganization, reorganization at the very least, adding the two alternates. So, we'll need to get that to you. And so, it's a good idea to have a straw pull on whether or not you want there to be some sort of cross-pollination between the Planning Commission and the board, and to what level. So, we need to, it would be nice to know that today. Um, and then also, the HPC ordinance is coming to you on the nineteenth as well. Uh, the structure being proposed for the board, in accordance with Mr. Lee's recommendations, are to have stakeholders from both the West Boulevard District and the Downtown District on that board. So, the way it's scripted right now is that we'd have two property owner or business owners from the Downtown Historic District would be required to be on the board, two from the West Boulevard District. We, by law, have to have two experts in the field, and then we would want an alternate for each of those as well, just so that we can always, um, have quorum. So, uh, you know, again, we kind of want to know whether or not this board is comfortable with looking at those candidates, and then in turn, making the final recommendation to council.
I would just like to make my comments. I really, one of the reasons I've enjoyed serving on this committee is because we're not tied to political entities, and we remain neutral and take all people's opinions. And if you become on a board, not that the information isn't good, but then you may be swayed in different ways and not be as open when you walk in. I'm not saying everyone wouldn't be. I know I would always try to keep that my highest priority here, but one of the things that I've always appreciated is that the group always listens to all of the ideas that come forward and takes them into consideration. And so, again, I'm not very knowledgeable on air quality. I'm a little bit knowledgeable on historic preservation, but the passions there seem to run so high that that could maybe add some stress to serving on something like that, because I would want to remain gathering information but neutral, because I'm, would be from the Planning Commission. So, I'm just sharing some of, uh, my thoughts on this, and now I would be certainly entertain a straw vote if someone would... Oh, Dennis, sorry. I missed you.
I'm not sure of the legal, uh, structure, but if we're re-looking at an ordinance, could we dissolve the Board of Adjustment and just have their functions become part of our regular operations, and so that we don't have that board at all, uh, as part of the, you know, requirement?
I think under state law, um, the Planning Commission can serve as a zoning Board of Adjustment. I think there would need to be, um, so it could be the same individuals who perform two different functions. That's one of the options that Brett listed. I think that's permissible under state law. Um, that's one of the options you can consider.
So, is, if I understand, you're saying we could dissolve that board as it is, assume their responsibility, and, um, still act, uh, in accordance with state law?
I wouldn't recommend dissolving the board, because I, I think what would, what would happen is the Planning Commission would act as the Board of Adjustment. Um, it could be the same people, it could be right after the Planning Commission meeting. So, but there's an, there's a, a role set forth in state law for the zoning Board of Adjustment to do certain things like grant variances. That would be retained, even if the same individuals as the Planning Commission would make that decision. Does that make sense?
I don't quite, uh, understand, uh, if the role and responsi- you know, I'm looking at some small counties, uh, where you have very few people that can serve, and they have multiple, uh, responsibilities, that we couldn't do the same thing. So, uh, if we just dissolve that board, but assume their responsibilities, um, by, uh, statute, then, uh, that would, um, enable the mayor to, to keep reducing the number of boards and commissions. So, I would like to have at least some thought given to that.
Brett?
Yep, if I might, um, and what Carla's alluding to is that by state law, we have to have a Board of Adjustment, and we also have to have a Planning Commission. Um, so, um, you can, if you, if the model that you want is for the boards to be the same members, you can do that, but you are gonna have to convene as the Planning Commission first, take care of the Planning Commission's business, which oftentimes is, is recommending things to council. You're gonna have to shut that meeting down, and then you could reconvene as the Board of Adjustment and take care of, uh, the variance requests, which are a quasi-judicial action. So, you can have the same membership, but we do have to have two completely separate boards. So, that's just the way the state statute works.
Karen?
Thank you. I, I think, I think, um, Dennis is, is wanting the same thing that you're wanting. He just, probably didn't realize that it's a quasi-judicial and it's part of state law, but, um, uh-
But as far as, as our input on, on certain things, I think that historic preservation, as John and Steve have mentioned, there, there, there's some folks on there that are, are real adamant about historic preservation. There's some that don't know a lot about historic preservation. And the hard part has always been trying to get people who care about those districts. And so the idea of having a, a couple from the downtown and a couple from West Boulevard, we've always tried to do that in the past. It's just been difficult, but if it's in, in some sort of an ordinance form that makes it more plausible to, to do that and if we can get the good, good people from those areas, I think that's, that's worthwhile to do that. I, I still agree, the air quality, I, if we're going to do anything, I think the zoning board of adjustment is the only one that really fits our, our needs. And, and coming back with some changes, I, I'm, I know that having an alternate on that, that board is important because it is hard to get a quorum sometimes and, and that makes it difficult for the people that we're trying to help, the constituents out there. So I think some of the things that you're going to bring back probably will be good things, you know, the, the new ordinances that, that Carla's working on and stuff. So thanks.
Steve.
Yeah, I guess what I'd like to see is right now you currently have members on the variance board. And what I'd like to see is maybe what you, what the mayor's talked about at some point in time, maybe having us begin to point to people too, that Karen's on there with me right now as one of the alternates, and then we have Eric on there. And as the other ones come off, then we could begin to replace them with members of the, the planning commission. And as you said, maybe we can have the first, at seven o'clock, we'll start the planning commission meeting when those items are done and set up the next meeting and, and go from there. I think that's a great idea. I think there's a lot of synergy there and I think it works really, really well. Some of the same ideas are, are there. I do agree with both Karen and John when it comes to air quality, especially historic preservation. I mean, there are some people that fervently believe in what they believe in. And I'd like, that, that is a huge as far as political, I think that should remain in the mayor's office for appointments because it is. It's something that people really have a, a, a passion for. And I would never want to step in their way because I think they really help us keep our, our downtown, even though I may disagree with them sometime, but that's a good thing. We have differing opinions and sometimes that keeps us kind of on the, on the balance there.
John.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senior moment. I'm, I'm sitting here and I, and I don't know how you want to do the straw poll, but I did hear the zoning board of, oh, I know what my comment was. It seems in order to do the people's business, that if we want to move people through process, wouldn't the zoning board meet first? Because there might be items that follow on if we take care of that business in the planning commission meeting, doesn't it? Don't they have to go to you first, Steve, and then, then they come to planning after they have their variance?
Our decisions are final at the variance board. They can appeal it to the council.
And I'm not talking about appeal, I'm talking about if there's a plat and they need a variance in there, the plat would come here, they'd need the variance to get the plat through. So, and I mean, that was my understanding, that that would be the timing of it.
And that's correct, yeah. In particular for plating or something like that, if they needed a frontage variance in order to plat, it'd probably be best for them to, if you're going to combine the boards, meet as the board of adjustment first.
Just in case they have another item that would be on the planning agenda and that saves them two weeks.
Correct.
Whatever the timeframe would be. So that, that was my comment there. And I'd, and I'd really like however you want to do it, Madam Chair, but I, I think the staff needs something to work on so they can start putting ink to it. And if they want to lobby for air quality and historic preservation to this board later on, but somehow put into ink the zoning board of adjustment. And I don't think you need a motion, you just need guidance?
Yeah, we've got a couple of weeks here to put this together. So the sooner we get the, your preferences, the better off we're going to be. Of course, it's going to have to come back to you anyways, so you can have this debate again, but we'd like to at least get this, the ordinances in as good a shape as possible.
Well, what I'd like to do now then is go through our members and see, get, each of them give their personal, if they care to serve on any of these or if we just stick with the board of adjustment, which I kind of have heard over and over that that's the one that we have knowledge with. Yeah, can we do that or not?
Yeah, I want to make one clarification about the mayor's model. And when it comes to historic preservation and air quality in particular, I don't think he's looking for the planning commissioners to serve on those boards. I think he's looking for you to just look at the applicants.
Oh.
And, and, you know, if we have multiple applicants, at the very least, I think staff should review the applicants and, and.
So some members of our committee would be in that review?
Exactly. And, and that's really what I was talking about maybe at the beginning of this discussion is, you know, the board of adjustment and the planning commission, you can actually share those responsibilities. His model is for the other two boards for you to be on the vetting process. So we have very strict requirements as to who can be on either of those boards, but his comfort level is I don't really want to make those appointments. I'd rather have the planning commission and staff get together, interview the applicants and then make a recommendation to you as a, as a board and then you in turn would send that to council.
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. John, would you like to say your comments?
I understand the mayor's feelings, having to appoint members to 42 different boards, how he could really use some help with that. And just like some of the other people mentioned, I don't know a lot about air quality and kind of the newer member to the planning commission. So I think zoning board of adjustments would be okay, but I'm willing to go with whatever the rest of the commission's willing to go with.
I, I strongly urge us to consider taking on the zoning board of adjustment, just seems to make sense. I've, I've kind of discussed it and wrestled with it. As far as even vetting air quality and historic preservation, I don't know what the, I don't know what the ordinances are, I don't know what the work is and I don't know who would be. I personally would not feel adequate in assessing who should be appointed to those boards. And I, and I wouldn't want to end up in the position of having to even recruit as those things would develop down the line. So that, those would be my feelings.
My comments are that as a, as a planning commission, I wouldn't like to see us appoint people and send it to the council. I think if the mayor would like to have some additional input on some of those and he wants to ask somebody from the public and it happens to be us, some of us, I, I don't see that that's a, a problem, but for us to, as a board, as a commission, make those recommendations, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. I agree with some of the changes that need to be made for the zoning board of adjustment and if it becomes us or part of us to become that, I don't have an issue with that. Historic preservation and air quality, I, I'm uncomfortable as a, as a commission making those decisions on those two. I, I wouldn't mind input, you know, individually input again, but I don't know anything about air quality enough to, to make decisions on who should or shouldn't be on that board. So that particularly is, is hard for me to do. I'd have some knowledge of historic preservation just because I've worked with them, but you know, other than that, so that's, thanks.
I'm going to throw another one in there for you too, Karen, just so you know. As the variance board member, we've also become the signing board of adjustments that was done recently. So as Paul Harvey would say, now you know the rest of the story. So just before you step your foot in there, I'm going to get.
[laughing]
But having said that, Karen has recently joined the variance board and she had the, as an alternate, she had to make some decisions the other day and Karen fit right in. I mean, it was smooth. She, she understands, she served on the council, she served on the planning commission. It was a very, a very good fit. So I, I'm very much in favor of that part of the process. And I'll say the same thing that, that the rest of the members have said here too. I know absolutely nothing about air quality. I know very little about historical society and I know, I, I do know that it's very, very political. Don't know that I want to step into that. I served my time on the council, I've been somebody's dartboard before, so I kind of like being here right now. So that's my comments.
Jan.
I understand the, the goal of the reorganization and I, I think it's good. I, I'm, my concern was conflict of interest because those questions come up between them and us. If, if those are considered by the mayor and, and/or the council and, and they come up with a solution to avoid that, at least the appearance of that, I, I, I'm in favor.
I agree with Jan. I think we should not be involved on the other two, but I would like to support John's recommendation, just the board of adjustments as our only first step in this recommendation.
Tim.
I'm just, you know, I'm a member of this board. I'd like to be on other boards and willing to, if there's any empty, empty spots, you know, willing to learn different part of the city, you know, different, like the air quality board or the historical, you know, willing to learn different, you know, different parts of the city and just willing to be on a couple more boards and stuff, so.
And I'm willing to serve on the board of adjustment and I have no problem assisting with interviewing or, or something like that, but I wouldn't want to be on the others. Yes?
Let me ask one more question. If you want to serve as both the board of adjustment and planning commission, is it the full membership of the planning commission or would you be looking at a subset? Keep in mind, the board of adjustment is only five people right now and we're proposing two alternates and this is obviously a considerably larger group. So that's another question I guess I, I need to ask you, what your feelings are on that.
I guess my question would be what would the council and the mayor like to propose to? I mean, I serve kind of at their recommendation. I like the idea, how they want to set it up, I, I really have no problem, whether it be the five now and two or however, either way, I'm, I'm fine.
Would this require an additional meeting if we had just the five or seven from this commission? So that now is requiring more time and preparation. So I, I, from efficiency point, I can see the full commission as taking that responsibility.
John.
I think, I think Steve and Karen probably have the idea that, that I would go along with and if they thought the full commission with people on it that knew what we were talking about could work, then that, I, I would lean that way simply because I'm getting to that age where those senior moments, I don't want to have to keep track of a seven o'clock meeting and if that's adjourned, I need to be here at 7:05 for the planning commission. If we all start at seven, do our work, then we do our work and then we're out of here. So it takes care of Dennis's another meeting issue as well.
Any other questions for us, Brett?
I think that's it. Carla, are you okay with, do you have any other questions? Vicki? Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second, okay. Tim made the motion, Karen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Meeting adjourned. [laughing]